We'll now call this regular workshop meeting in Jacksonville City Council. The board, council, you have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting and along with that are minutes from the March 21st, 2023, regular meeting. And there's four consent items, one being an add-on, which will be 3A, which is a resolution supporting the NCDQ project W523U, which is the western part of our Henderson Drive project. All right, with that, I'm going to adjourn to motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those favors, say to five, I say an I.
Aight.
All closed. So we're going to go on this and at six, we're going to probably take a break. We'll have Mr. Jackson phone back in about time after six.
After six.
After number six. So we'll begin tonight and let me say again, this is a workshop and generally speaking, we don't take action during workshops. So unless it's something that entirely requires an actionable item, which I don't foresee one, but anyway, let's stick to our methodology here. So we have our first discussion tonight is Boys and Girls Club. And we have Keith Williams, Executive Corrector.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members and Mr. City Manager. We appreciate you guys giving us this opportunity. Many of you may know or may have may not know that the Boys and Girls Clubs switched names in January due to a unification. You'll see those names come across, but it's Boys and Girls Clubs of Southeastern North Carolina. So, I'm out here, Mr. Josh. Can you run that, please?
I'm just going to clap my hands and see if it works.
Do I need to get you a hand?
Look at that.
Okay. So these are our lovely faces. These are actually our Onslow kids, but you'll see those day in and day out at our sites. But again, Boys and Girls Clubs of Southeastern North Carolina. There you go. Our proposed site that, and when I say proposed site, we have signed an MOU with Sandy Run Community and the Board of Directors. That location was going to be up and running March 1. Unfortunately, we had a little bit of an issue with permitting and a little bit of issues with engineering, but you know, we have stepped out of faith. We're going to have that site up and running. Currently, it's Section 8 housing, as many of you know, there's 152 units there. We did a lot of homework in that, in that area, the schools that are served in that area, Bellford Elementary, Jacksonville Commons Middle School and Northside High School. Worked very closely with Ms. Tricia Purcell Heath. She is the finance person and the manager of Sandy Run Apartments. What we found out, obviously, we're trying not to duplicate any services by any organizations. There's currently less than 5% of the youth in that organization or in that neighborhood that have any type of program to include after-school programming. And you know, our closest provider is the city of Jacksonville, Parks and Rec. The demographics over there, the total school age, there's 137 kids, 6 through 18 in Sandy Run. Ages 6 to 12 is 88. Ages 13 to 18, there's 49. And our concentration in the beginning will be solely on K through 5. Obviously, we have to make sure that we're able to serve based on the, excuse me, size of the building. We did some in-depth study, again, to make sure that we were not, as I said, duplicating any services. There's only seven kids in Sandy Run that have any type of services, and we have a list of those. There's one that's being served at childcare, at the Living Order Christian, one at Childcare Network, one at Teachable Moments, one at Love Center Childcare, one at Excel 8, one at Above &amp; Beyond, one at Onslow County Child Development Center. And there's also five additional children that are being taken care of by a paid family member or a friend of the family. So of the 137 kids that live in Sandy Run, there's 12 kids in that whole community that have any type of service, which comes to the point that it is the most underserved and lowest-income area in the city of Jacksonville. Right here, we want to show you just an overall view of what we would be doing. If you look at the slide on the left, obviously, the very bottom, that's Country Club Road. Many of you, I'm sure, know Sandy Run Community. There's one way in and one way out. And that third building on the left is the Community Center, Sandy Run Community Center. We're going to have some shared spaces there, obviously, with the community. There's a playground there, there's a basketball court that is lighted, and also there's a very large field that we were looking at for other activities. They also want to do community gardens. They also want to do like things like fruit trees, grapevines, and things that not only do our kids help tend, but it reaps the benefits for the community over there. So that's the outlay of the, of the community. This is just our quick, quick sketch of what the building looked like so that we could prove that the square footage would serve the number of kids that we need to serve. So that may not mean a whole lot to you guys at the moment, but it's a 3,200 square foot building. The focused part of it, the large room, would be for general activities. The bottom lower right-hand corner is a room for programming, which we would have as a computer lab for those kids to come into. Sorry, I didn't know that was on the next one, but that's the, that's the information there I just shared with you. These are our club locations for the Boys and Girls Club right now. If you look in the top right-hand corner up here, we have six locations, which is the elementary schools. They're just outside of the city of Jacksonville. Down in the bottom are our four locations in New Hanover, and then the red star there is Sandy Run. One, we wanted to make sure we didn't duplicate our own services, but we also do not want to duplicate services that, you know, other organizations are maybe providing services. This is a, I say a win-win for everyone because of that community not being served currently. And anytime that we reach out to community partners, I'd use First Bank for an example, we run financial literacy. Their, their bank is here in Jacksonville. They want to know first thing, where's your location in Jacksonville? You know, they want to be right here in the city. So when we, we made an agreement with another organization to take Clyde Irwin location, that took us out of the city. So we've been working with council members and, and the board over at Sandy Run for quite a while now, knowing that that was a need. And again, it serves their need, it serves our need, and it's, it's going to be serving children that the city will not have to worry about taking care of. This is the budget, if you can see that. What, what's going to see at the top, and I want to say this, we went to their Christmas party, which was amazing. If you've never been, you need to go out and hang out at the Christmas party at Sandy Run during December. But we went to that and we did a survey while we were there. We were there for, I think, six hours and it was just a blast. But we did a survey, if we opened that location, how many families thought that they would take advantage of our services? Now, this could change day in and day out because we started in, in January, I mean, it started in December. We have about 60 people, 60 members that think they would join. So we looked over here at enrollment for our after-school program and our summer programs, we would look at about 60. We knew, we use a number called ADA, which is Average Daily Attendance. Based on our numbers year in and year out, we would probably run about 50 per day. You never get 100% of everything. People are visiting, grandmother, sicknesses and all of those type things. So we're, we're expecting to run about 50 kids per day in that unit. Our hours of operation, 2 to 6:30 for the after-school program, that is when we can get the most done. Boys and Girls Club after-school programs, there's a lot of instructional in there. Healthy habits, smart moves, safe moves, safe girls, financial literacy. We do a lot of things educational and then we do our plan, but otherwise, we do a lot of educational. So we want to make sure we have time to do that. During the summer, we were looking at a 10 to 4 program, and that was solely on the Sandy Run Board. They just said, I'm telling you, you're on-site, getting the kids out of bed. We normally start our sites at 7 and end at 6, but they're going to be on location. So they said, I just think you're going to be safe doing 10 to 4, because if you're going to start programs at 9, you're not going to have many kiddos there. They're still sleeping in. This is the budget on the bottom. Now, we'll say, we were seeking 1,200 bucks. That is, we're not going to charge any kid, I want to make that clear, we're not charging any family or any child anything to go to these programs. However, we were going to do an enrollment fee for these 60 of only $20. But since this budget was put together, I've already had a sponsor that's come forth and has paid that 1,200. So we just felt like a little buy-in to get them there, and this still will be a buy-in situation. We will let them know that your initial fee was $20 just for your membership, however, we even have that covered. Grants, we were seeking $45,000. And what we're asking from the city of Jacksonville is a $25,000 grant, and we will get the rest of that from HHS, Health and Human Services pays us based on our ADA. So they will, they will pick up the difference in that. Even before our debt, doors are open, we already have private donations of 40, $34,275. The minute we started talking about those programs, coming in and doing things for that underserved community, we received quite a bit of money right off the bat, and that gives us our total revenue that we would need of $80,475. Now, our expenditures at the bottom, the total wage is $61,940. And I will say, this is based on a 1 to 10 ratio. We normally run our sites at a 1 to 15 ratio. We felt like because a kid lives across the street, he might walk out the door inside, he's going home, we want more eyes on those children. So we're running an even tighter ratio of 1 to 10. So for every 10 kids in there, we will have an adult. Taxes and benefits, $6,190. Program supplies, these are things that we give traditionally that, from Boys and Girls Clubs of America, $3,250. Transportation, I am pleased to say that an organization has stepped up and will be buying a bus for Sandy Run. And my dream there is that they get to see something other than coming to Sandy Run, getting on the bus, coming back to Sandy Run. And I painted a picture as simple as, many of those people, those young kids will never feed a duck with a loaf of bread, just to get them to a duck pond, get them to a ballgame, get them, get them out to ride to see Christmas decorations at the holiday, things that they will never see otherwise. So we are on a project right now, an organization is purchasing a bus for Sandy Run alone. It will sit there and it'll say, Boys and Girls Club, Sandy Run Location. Transportation, obviously, is going to be the fuel. Occupancy, Sandy Run has been so good to us to basically get everything up, fitted, there's no charge to us. However, if a child kicks a hole through the sheetrock or messes up, you know, the paint gets messed up, we want to have a little fun there that we can keep their building looking top-notch. So we'll be able to go back and do some painting and anything needs to be done. Staff costs are our staff T-shirts. All of our staff wear noticeable shirts that says staff, Boys and Girls Clubs of Southeastern North Carolina. They're a certain color. If a parent comes in or if a child comes in, they know how to identify our staff members. Food program, we give them a healthy snack once after school. During the summer, they'll get morning and afternoon. And also, when we run our summer programs, we also have a partnership with Onslow County Schools that lunches will be provided. So again, no charge to the kids, whether it's snacks or whether it's lunches. Technology, there's always going to be something that's going to go bad. Even though there's internet there at the Sandy Run Community Center, you're always going to need something. A computer's going to go bad, you're going to need modems, you're going to need just different things, so we're going to put a little bit of money in there. And again, in dealing with Mr. Evans, there's, there's nothing that we need upfront. That building is, they've done a great job of maintaining it, super excited, other than two changes that are having to be made, just permitting and a coding thing, that will be taken care of. So that brings our total expenses to $80,475. And obviously, it's, it's a nonprofit, so there's no net income. Okay, I will say this last thing is, you know, Boys and Girls Clubs Southeastern North Carolina, we are asking and seeking your support. They are our children, they're Jacksonville's children for $25,000. And again, it is the most underserved and most, and the lowest-income area here in the city of Jacksonville. And we are willing to step up and make sure that those kids have a brighter future. So if anyone has any questions for me or comments, council?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
With the data that you presented, how, what's the date of that data?
That was November.
This past November of '22?
We started working on that in, in high hopes that it was going to be open in March. That was our projected date, so we could get a couple of months under our belt before we start summer camp. And we did some extensive research with Ms. Tricia over there at Sandy Run. She told me there's not a whole lot of fluctuation. They're not in and out and people don't stay short-term. We may see those numbers fluctuate, but in general, these are some of the numbers she's run for quite a few years.
What's the max amount of kids that you can have?
We worked with the city on that and we feel like 60 is going to be safe. We can, we would need to reach out to the fire department, obviously, to make sure. But when we took that survey, 60, because they're not all in the one room at the same time. They're going to be in the programming room, the technology room, some will be at the playground, you know, and then there's another room in the back that we have, that we have access to as well. Then there is a fenced-in playground in the back for the smaller kids. So it's not, they'll never really be in the same room all at one time. Try to keep those kids spread out from, you're talking about K through 5, you know, five-year-olds are too cool to be around the kindergartners, they like to pick on them, so we just, we keep them spread out. But there's plenty of room for the 60. And we, I said it would be a great problem to have if we have 75 that won't enroll. You know, we'll work it out. And I just want to leave one last comment. We've also partnered with the board over there that even though we'll start later in the afternoon, 2, 2:30, whenever the kids get out, we're going to provide staffing from 12 o'clock until. And what our hopes is, is there, is that we can teach parents, older siblings or anybody how to do resumes, applications, interviews, and things that would help make them a better applicant when they're out applying, you know, throughout the community for, for better jobs. So we want to, we don't want to just be working with the kids, we want to be community partners to help the entire community.
Just create new jobs too for staff or are you just moving people around?
We, well, we will if we get that, because we do have a program for the youth development. If we have someone that wants to get on, onboard, I already had three Sandy Run applicants come in from the community. So if we can employ people over there, if it's within their guidelines, we also want to make sure that we have some people on-site. They've already been vetted to live there, because we go through extra vetting for the Boys and Girls Club. But we would love to have people on-site. They know those kids. I'm going to tell your mama, you know, straighten you out. So those are good people to have onboard, Bill.
Have you also looked with the Department of Education, because there are grants with each state having a national alliance after-school program, the grants through the Department of Education? Have you applied for those grants?
I would say at this point, no.
You might want to, I absolutely have brought some information back from the National League of Cities Council.
Okay.
Part of their after-school advisory luncheon, and I have plenty of information I can share with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I think some of those monies from the state, as well as the federal government, might be of interest to you.
Yes, ma'am, please, thank you.
And my last question, what wraparound services are you also going to provide for the students? Because my concern is that the 13 through the 18-year-olds can be the latchkey kids, and I kind of wonder about them not having a structured summer. So what type of wraparound services will your group be able to provide?
We have four other locations, and we have promised them that we would try to serve as many on-site as possible, and we'll have to do that, obviously, by COVID. But we have four of the locations and our plan is to bus those. Our nearest location is New Bridge Middle, which is just around the corner. So we have saved slots there for other kids that won't enroll. Obviously, we don't want to have 13, 14, 15-year-old kids in there with K through 5.
Absolutely.
That would be, I'm not saying dangerous, but it'd be mighty boring for those older s- so we will take those-
Social development is not appropriate.
Yes, ma'am. We would take those to, if they want to go to Richlands, if they want to go to Sandridge or New Bridge Middle, so we have those locations. And also Clearview will be a summer camp. So we have four other locations.
You also mentioned something about this community being underserved. The first thing that popped into my mind was about civic affairs, because civic affairs is all about education. So I'm wondering, well, we have a meeting on Thursday, how the civic affair members can, you know, we, we have the Bay Brute Memorial, we have the Lejeune Gardens, we have the Monmouth Point Museums, some of these places that these kids have never been. So what is the likelihood of strategically planning trips for these underserved students to, to look at a part of their county and a city in which they are affiliated with to learn more about it?
Yes, ma'am. The likelihood is 100%. I would love to take, and we have that bus for a reason, to bus those kids out, so we have access to two buses. If we have something of that nature, I would love to bus them there, because again, that's stuff they're never going to see, they're never going to be involved in. And we want those kids to be the future civic, you know, civic affairs, people, military affairs, whatever they are, council members, we want them to be involved. And they're not going to get there if they don't see it in action. They don't see a reason to want to be involved. So we want that. That's one thing that I've, I've got a site director that's going to be at that site, 21-year retired Marine and just grew up in a Boys and Girls Club. He's ready to go. He's worked with me for four years. He is super excited. He, he does a lot of work right now with other organizations that are working in Sandy Run, and it's, that's going to be a win-win for all of us. And he's already mentoring those parents on resumes, applications and things of that nature. So that's what we want to do, is get them out of that, so it's not a vicious cycle that they've always seen all their life of just feeling like they have to stay there because they don't. They can make a better way, and we want to help them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Yes, sir. Thank you and thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It's positive. Positive or not.
Would anyone like any hard copies? Are they old-fashioned? Yeah, I'm old-fashioned, I like the hard copies.
It's like that bedtime reading, passing on down.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Sewell, how you doing?
Good, doctor, how are you?
We can share, I've got-
I got plenty. We just like them back. At the end, we present to the county and then to the school board. So, but I'm Billy Sewell and thank you so much for the opportunity for our NERVO YMC to meet with you. And I'd like to acknowledge other board members that are with us, certainly Steve Wangren and then Reverend Churchwell and then Don Rochelle and Chief Yonero behind us. So thank y'all for the time. And this is a great collaboration to this point, that we've been able to work through a feasibility study with a pool facility company out of Georgia, Architect Unlimited and Aquatics H2O. And we have had great, successful conversations with the legislature in April and then certainly Congressman Murphy's office. And certainly, we have already had a conversation with the school board. We go back and meet with them on 4/25. And then certainly, this is our second meeting. We've summoned most of y'all. And certainly, we wind up meeting with the commissioners on this coming Monday. So as some of you know and part of you know, you know, just the reason and the whys of this talks about why we need a pool facility and certainly in collaboration with the school system. And then this materialized in November and into December. Our NERVO YMCA has just signed a lease to purchase the River Life Building at 1940 Gunbranch Road. And we'll take this over the first week of May. And it's ironic that Steve and I and Don were standing in this lot out to the left and said, you know, I wonder if this pool would fit right over here, you know, towards Cardinal Village. And if you flip to the next page, you'll see, that's the Lord's work, that it's more than a coincidence that it fits nicely. So from our perspective, as we have talked about and we'll go through in a minute, our goal is to present to each of our partners, city, county and school system. And certainly, we've already done that with the legislature and certainly Representative Shepard with the Speaker's Office and then Senator Lozaro with the Speaker of Proton Berger. And we have been asked by the legislature to get the memorandums of understanding from each of our three county partners and then be able to present that back to the legislature in late May, early June, thus that that would trigger the $5 million ask, which we'll show you in a minute, how that plays into the puzzle of a public-private partnership.
Just, just, I just want to walk back just a step. So if you're looking at this site and you see the existing building, which is the white roof and the pool facility, which is the gray roof, if you will, the plan is, thanks to your support with helping us begin the Y in 2018 on Cheney Avenue, we've been able to serve thousands of kids. And our estimate today is, we're probably reaching and touching close to 2,000 kids on a daily basis as a Y between after-school, before-school programs, the 21st Century Grant Program at Clyde Irwin Elementary and then summer camps and things like that. It has allowed us to grow. And you see the pool site, and that's what we're here to talk about, is the pool. But we want you to know that that River Our Life existing facility will be an expansion of the Y as well, serving youth primarily in that area through before-school or preschool, homeschooling efforts. And the sanctuary in the center of it is a perfect 60 by 100 rectangle that'll be able to be turned into multipurpose area, gym space, other activity-type space. And administrative space will be into church offices, which will allow us to take Cheney Avenue down here and turn it into an actual childcare center for what we think serves this area well, for government workers primarily that are located in this area. So not only does this pool site work well, it fits the area and the community to, to help continue to build youth programs and get kids in a great setting.
And as you flip, you'll see the two-pole facility with the competition and school use and certainly, we anticipate YMCA swim teams using the left. And then the, the pool on the right would be recreation and rehab facility. And then as you see, the footnote's down on the left and the legend, and that brings to the conversation that we have had, three successful conversations with the VA. And part of the reason for the a little bit larger-sized facility, they are asking for 2,500 square feet for OT, ET, physical therapy and pool use. And they also want immediate gym use, which are lays out to the point of 10 yards away in the River Life Building. And that 13,000 square feet is that 7,000 square foot gym space will turn into multipurpose gym space. So this will really work hand in glove. And you see the, the D on the bottom would be the VA Center, and the G on the left would, you know, be birthday parties for Logan's children and my children. And you see on the previous page where there's a splash pad, and I'll also give this extra room- room for additional splash pad or outdoor pool facility going into the future. So you see the overlay on the next page. And then going one step further, you will see, you know, certainly the expansion, the challenge, the solution, the impact, certainly how it's laid out in the dollars, the legislative ask, five million, county schools at three million, certainly the City of Jacksonville at three, and then Onslow County. And then our Y board and our Y partners plan the race between, we think, between a million and a million-two, that would go towards a pool loss share fund, because, you know, somewhere in this, and you'll see it in the next page, there's anticipated revenue on an annual basis for the rental and the use of the pool facilities, and then there's expense. And we think it'll take three to four years where there may be a break even. And we anticipate using those, that million dollars, so that we don't have to come back to the city or the county or any partner for four or five years. And then it hopes for a long while, because we'll be working out of that million dollars. So the next page shows, you know, there would be a three-hundred, a six-hundred, and a, you know, a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar expense, and revenue versus expense. The next page that you're looking at also, I may have skipped a point, shows the potential expense. We think that there's between a thirteen and a fourteen-million-dollar construction costs, and those numbers are about sixty days old as of middle of February. And then there is anticipated number in there for land cost as well, that we'll be able to lower the cost of the facility from a two-point-seven-million-dollar purchase that's leased to the Y M C A. So in turn, the, from a landlord perspective to the tenant perspective, if the Y M C A wants to buy the facility from the landlord group, then it will be one million dollars less, one-point-seven versus the cost at purchase of two-point-seven. So it'll just make the flow-through and all the pieces of the economics much easier over Y, so we can perform more services. Then our ask is a memorandum of understanding, and speaking with some of you, and certainly the mayor, is the ask of three million dollars over two blended cycles. The first dollar's coming before, and by the fourth quarter of this year, and another million and a half coming by the end of the second or third quarter of next year, so that when those anticipated dollars flow in with all four partnerships, then we would be able to start construction sometime in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. So we anticipate the cost of site work will be minimal, because we're on a flat site, and curb and gutter, we do know that will have other expected costs, not unusual to develop a cost, but we're in the middle of great usage and hope on both sides and in all four corners, or all four potential land contingencies. And the bright spot is, thanks to y'all, the city will be able to use the cut-through through the state park, so that'll allow, you know, mothers or whoever driving children and other folks to use it, that they can turn right, go out to Western, or find the stoplight from the Williamsburg Plantation Shopping Center, which will, you know, hopefully be a safety enhancement versus turn left on Gum Branch. So what we would anticipate after we would get a memorandum of understanding from the city is coming back in May and June, and basically have, because, you know, we understand the city's going to be represented with John, the county will be represented with Brett The Sound, the school system, with Mr. Urban, and then our Y M C A is, how do we create a loss-share document that's fair to all parties? That we, you know, we know that at some point, it's like an air conditioner, only Logan knows when the compressor's going to go out, you know? So from our perspective, you know, when will a motor on one of these two, you know, half-a-million-to-a-million-dollar machines that works these two pool facilities? So that's the only thing that we know, we've got to have clear language where it's fair to all concerned. So we recognize that, and we're prepared to compromise in ways that's going to work for everybody. But as we know and we see whether, you know, I went to Parkwood, Northwoods Park in Jacksonville, and I was not on any swim team that there was. They didn't have one to offer. Well, going forward in two thousand and twenty-five or twenty-six, I think every high school and junior high should have the opportunity for a swim team, the Naver Y M C A will have swim teams. And there's probably a mark spits in Onslow County, we just don't know it yet. So there's hope and opportunity here, but as my daddy was a school principal, said, if you can keep a young person busy from the time school gets out, so he goes to bed, and on Saturday and Sunday, there's hope that he won't spend his week on Court Street. So I can only say that from a perspective that this building will be open three hundred and sixty-four days a year, and the River of Life, Naver Y M C A, will have an opportunity three hundred and sixty-four or three hundred and sixty-five days, that we can change young people's lives, or have an opportunity that it can be a senior center in some aspects. And I know that they may be able to, they want to use the pool facility. So this is a citywide, countywide, maybe a multi-county use facility that for low cost and no cost, this will be a great opportunity that we've never had in Onslow County. So I'm trying to stay within your tone frame. I'm just saying, manager.
I would add that this, the Y has a long history of being able to own and operate pools, and the experience. Billy and I don't have the experience, nor does anybody on our team, but we will find that experience. And the Y brings resources from across the country on how to operate a pool facility. But this is, this proposal is, we will run it, but it's a community asset for all to enjoy. If you're a county resident, you'll have the opportunity to use this pool facility. Obviously, in order for all, for this to work, everybody would have to pay some sort of fee on a daily basis, or they could be a monthly member or things like that. That's all to be determined as to what those rates are. But it's a community asset. It's an asset that, with the city and the county and the school board investing in it, it needs to be just that. But we will bring the Y leadership and the Y ownership of operating it to the table. I think we can do that well.
And we have several Y M Cs within two hours, whether it's Wilmington, Dullesboro, Wilson, Rocky Mount. Jane has worked in two different facilities, where she had one and two-pool and five-pool facilities. So we recognize that no other entity in our partnership wants that liability. And we're comfortable, and we, the Y M C A have that experience. So that's the burden that we'll take and have a comfort zone with all that, because we know that it's provided service. You know, it's the grocery store, people might call it, it may be a loss leader, but it's a needed performance for water safety and for the all the aspects of, you know, infant all the way to seniors that I think our community and our county and our city needs, and we're ready for it. So without a table for any questions.
Quick question. What was your estimate of the annual expense of operation?
First year, Sammy, at the bottom of, so I'll try and get to that page. But we estimate it's about a half a million dollars the first year, right there at the bottom, and then seven fifty, and then nine hundred for second and third year, to see what our projected revenues are. And this didn't just come out off there. Our consultant in this feasibility study put this together for us, and Billy didn't mention, but the legislature was so gracious to give us, or gave us five hundred thousand dollars in last year's budget cycle to do the feasibility study, and to begin the process of doing some design phase and that type of stuff. So we got a little bit of legroom and buy-in already from the legislature last year. So we believe that we can go back to the speaker with, and our representatives, with a memorandum of understanding from all three parties here in Onslow County, the City of Jacksonville, Onslow County, and the school board, that we can be successful in getting a match, if you will, of those committed dollars. And it's an all-or-nothing in our best opportunity. I mean, if you do a memorandum of understanding, it can specifically state that if the school board and the commissioners or everybody has to be in agreement doing this for it to be done. It won't be just, it's got to be an all-or-nothing. What do you try to get an answer? Was it, what did that look?
I told the Speaker's Office and the board tomorrow that we were bringing, they want to get out by July fourth, so they want to have their budget ratified, ratified, and completed sometime the last two weeks of June. So I told him by the end of the first week of June, I would be bringing him three to four memorandum of understanding.
Hey, just out of curiosity, are earmarks tied to whether or not cover a pre-size of the budget or not?
Just out of curiosity. Expansion of Medicaid, I understand, was-
Oh, so going with that, huh?
Yes, sir. That's what I was told by, by Shepard, Berger, Moore, and Lozaro.
I've lived in Jacksonville long enough that I don't remember when there was a pool at the J T Kerr Recreation Center downtown. Do you remember that? Okay. Oh, okay. However, I do specifically remember when there was a swimming pool. I don't remember when it was built, but I remember there used to be a swimming pool in front of Northwoods Recreation Center. Years ago now, it's been filled in. My question to the both of you, have you considered bringing the federal government into this partnership? Now, here's the reason that I'm asking you this. When I attended the North Carolina MAC meeting back in February of this year, there is something that's called the North Carolina Community Infrastructure Program. And specifically, there is something known as the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, known as D C E P. I'll send this information to you, in which it is designed to address deficiencies in community infrastructures that are supportive of the military installation, enhance military installation value, provide installation resilience, and provide military families with the quality of life. And under the Secretary of Defense, this program can make grants, conclude cooperative agreements, and supplemental funds up to a granting source of ninety million dollars. So just in case, here's something that I want to share with the public, that previous D C E P grant awards that specifically came to Onslow County and the City of Jacksonville, Camp Le June and Ellis Airport received two million dollars for the runway renovation, and the City of Jacksonville received a million dollars for Jack and Yet. So I'm wondering now, since we have the support of your legislatures thus far, maybe the next step is to seek out these fundings, get the federal governments, because their pocketbooks is a little bit more bigger than ours, and because we have a military installation directly aside to our cities, bringing in the federal government might help, because according to this summary, your proposals have to be shovel-ready, located off a military installation. So it's worthwhile looking into.
Good point. We have a-
Great point.
And we have a request in to Congressman Murphy's office and to Senator Tillis's office, and there were, and Congressman Murphy mentioned that there is a pot of money, because he sits on Veterans Affairs. I don't know if it ties back specifically-
Well, this came out of the North Carolina MAC, which I'm a member of, yes, sir.
We have, we have, Matt, we don't, we have, we have a request in that actually has to go through Tillis's office. The Congressman Murphy has written a letter of support for our facility. That was to be submitted by, I think, the end of March, to, and Tillis would submit it in, in the earmark program. So we do have that, we do have something submitted there, but I don't, Angela, I'm not sure that it's through this program. Obviously, we need to also explore this program, because any additional monies we can get, we need the commitment to do this, but any additional monies that then could just go into that reserve account, or however it needed to be appropriated.
Can you send that information?
I sure will.
But we did, we did get a letter of support from Congressman Murphy's office, Senator Tillis's office, to try and get in this round their budget too. It had to be on my March thirty-first, or we miss. But if you don't get it this time, we can always go back this time next year for the same ask.
Seems like that would tie together well with the service and V A.
We had a meeting Thursday about twelve o'clock with Adam Collinwell, with Senator Tillis's office, to go one step further and then ask, or will ask certainly this pointed idea of good thought. So let's just say that you had, you know, United States government as a fifth partner down here, it could be that we figure that out by the time we start construction, or somewhere in that, and we, we're anticipating an eighteen-month construction or so, then I hate to go as far as to say, we'll give your money back. But if there's a good partnership and there are dollars left, then we're all open hands, and we're going to share and recognize that the dollars that come are going to go into a controlled account that have to have debits and credits before the money can come out. And certainly, if all parties need to approve it, so be it. So I know the five hundred thousand that's sitting at the county, and then most likely the state will spend their four or five million dollars to that same account with the county, and those funds have to follow that same process. So no worries. We're excited for this opportunity, and we feel very comfortable that it's real doable, but it's, you know, I don't think these funds are always going to be available to legislature, and I don't know that the school system or the county, that they'll always be available. So I think the iron's hot and the desire's here, let's give sometimes the two-hundred-and-ten-thousand folks in Onslow County in the next twelve months. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, give it back to him.
Best, you give it back. You don't, you deserve it.
Mr. Sewell. I'll give you a telephone. Give this information. Mr. Wangren.
Do I have your card?
I know how to get in contact with you.
Um, thank you. We have received this information too. God, that money, I wanted to get a person to pay.
I like cash. I have dental records, credit cards, cash gets me places sometimes. No, I had done that yet.
I didn't ask on you.
How are you? How are you doing? Good to see you.
It's all about the children today. We got a lot of them.
Jennifer's not here today?
Yeah.
Okay. What? Are you at the counter? I got it. All right, we're ready.
I've got liquor.
Watch out.
Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to update you on our community work, the status of our permanent home, and an invitation to you to be a part of the legacy of One Place with an award of a capital investment. My name is Dawn Rochelle, and I have the honor of serving as the chief executive officer of One Place. And alongside me this evening is Anne Marie Raymond, our chief advancement officer. Anne Marie and I have presented to you several times over the years as community needs have emerged. The council has sold as leaders for our community in creating the Suicide Task Force in 2015 and the Child Abuse Task Force in 2018. When issues are presented, you respond by collaboration, thoughtful responses, and servant leadership. For that, we are thankful for your belief in what we do today and for what we see for tomorrow for our children and our community. We are guided by the questions of what are the problems we are uniquely positioned to solve, and what does the community depend on us to do? Sitting around the table in 2018, we were approaching our 20th year as a nonprofit and just having a conversation. What are we here for and what are we known for? We are proud of our work and we're always called to do more. Knowing that preventing and ending child abuse will likely not end in our lifetime, how can we ensure that One Place will continue to exist to serve our children and our families long past us? We know that rent of our current space was a large expenditure and still is, and we knew that the space was not flexible currently or would meet our needs long term. So we began an exhaustive programming process in 2019 to become more clear on our space needs, our focus on healing, and where we needed help to serve more. This has driven us to our need for expansion, and we are thankful to the city and securing the piece of property in the Jacksonville Commons. Knowing that we hold the responsibility of creating resilience for children when they have been sexually or physically assaulted, knowing that we must ensure the most trained staff, knowing that we must support the expansion of early childhood in the youngest community in North Carolina, knowing that we must create responsive, trauma-informed child mental health services for child victims, and knowing that we must support our ever-growing military population, led us to the creation of a concept of a state-of-the-art, modern facility that is treated with the child, family, and community partners in mind. You see in front of you a concept design of our state-of-the-art home that has been designed to restore hope in families that have been hurt, fractured, and feel disconnected. Every design element has used emerging science to support children and families and community partners exposed to traumatic events. Think about what you need and what you look for when you're going for medical and mental health treatment. As humans, we look for spaces where we feel safe, and through research, we know that environment matters. The North Carolina General Assembly, through the leadership of our representative Phil Shepard and our Senator Michael Lozara, made an investment in this vision in 2021. The State Employees Credit Union Foundation made their first substantial capital gift ever in Onslow County to name our permanent home, the Secu Hope Center, in 2022. These investments propel the project forward, and we will break ground with your help this summer. To understand more of how the service will be delivered, we will focus on the areas of impact that this project allows us to expand. The area to the left in green on your screen represents our nationally accredited child advocacy center that will include two separate suites to enable multiple children to receive services simultaneously. The expansion from 2,100 to 5,200 square feet will reduce wait time for services and potential evidence collection. The area in light orange on your bottom of the screen on the right side is the child mental health space. This space will provide over 1,400 square feet for multiple mental health providers to ensure that each child victim receiving child advocacy center services has access to timely onsite mental health support. The area in the middle in white is collaborative space to extend our capacity for group mental health care and collaborative workspace for all of our multidisciplinary partners. The need for resilience, mental health, and early care and education training is not diminishing. The area in pink to the back at the top of the screen will be a hub for statewide and regional events, trainings, and conferences. We need to expand our community capacity for large educational events. This area is also configured for disaster response if needed in our community. Child abuse changes the course of a child's life. Child abuse is a community responsibility. Our community came together in 2005 to do what's best for our children. All elected leaders and agency heads agreed that a child advocacy center was needed in our community to respond to the high rates of abuse and neglect. The local district attorney and community leaders recommended that One Place host the child advocacy center. We began serving child abuse victims in 2010. Since then, we have evaluated more than 3,400 local children and thousands of parents and caregivers. Our child advocacy center is a sole entity in Onslow County who can deliver the entire service needed to comprehensively evaluate a child for abuse. One Place is the hub of coordinated response, working with all child-serving agencies and every civilian and military law enforcement agency. At any given time, the child advocacy center has about 1,000 children with open cases awaiting justice through the courts and in need of additional services. Sadly, the need is not lessons. I want you to imagine yourself as a parent when you learn that your child has been raped or sexually assaulted. Wouldn't you want your child to be seen immediately in your own community and by a team of highly-trained professionals engaged in evidence-based practices? One Place employs the only two rostered and credentialed child abuse medical experts in Onslow County. They, along with our trained child forensic interviewers and victim advocates, thoughtfully talk with the child and perform a comprehensive medical exam and lab test to ensure the child is safe and healthy. One Place does this in partnership and collaboration with Child Protective Services and Military and Civilian Law Enforcement, who are physically onsite with us throughout the entire process. Working so closely together reduces the number of times child victims must tell their story, which lessens trauma. It also allows for case consultation and planning to occur as a team. This ensures that all responding agencies are on the same page. At our child advocacy center, we have evaluated a 12-day-old victim of physical abuse, a sexual abuse victim turning 18 the following day, and all other ages in between. It's what we agreed to do. Law enforcement closes their cases once criminal charges have been filed. Child Protective Services closes their cases once they determine the risk has been reduced or eliminated. One Place becomes the constant for the child and family. One Place continues to support child victims throughout the entire and lengthy journey proceeding criminal court. It is not unusual for a court case to take two to four years after the charges are filed. When the time finally arrives for court, our trained staff sit with them during a very scary and highly emotional time. Imagine being a child testifying in front of your offender, especially since 92% of the time, the offender is known to them. The case is strengthened with our team providing expert testimony in the child's trial. The entire process from beginning to end is both proven and successful. Our own district attorney, Ernie Lee, will tell you that having a child advocacy center has doubled the increase in the successful prosecution rate. The piece that is missing is accessible and comprehensive child mental health services. Ask any parent that has tried to schedule an appointment. Best practice requires certain therapy modalities, and we currently only have two providers that see our children. So add the numbers together, we have over 300 children a year that are evaluated for sexual or physical abuse. It takes three to four years to go to court. We are there to support the service. We have 800 to 1,000 children at any given time that need specialized child mental health services so that the habit that adverse childhood experience does not impact the future of this child. When it does, we all pay them. Again, our new space will allow state-of-the-art technology to offer opportunities for virtual, in-person, hybrid training, conferences, and regional and statewide meetings. By educating our community and connecting professionals and businesses with vital resources, we can create a more responsive community that provides a strong foundation for all children and families and creates lasting positive change. For 25 years, One Place has developed professional-level jobs for our community. Today, we employ 60 full-time positions. This project will add a projected 25 new professional-level staff that bring desperately-needed skills for our children. The upper half of the story building is pretty much what we currently have in administrative and operations support in a collaborative work environment for our early education services that support our childcare workforce and our childcare centers and preschool classrooms in public schools. Our permanent home concept was approved by our board of directors, some of whom are in the room this evening, in March of 2020, right before life as we knew it shifted. We are all aware of the cost escalation that has happened, and we are all aware of supply chain issues, and we are all aware that we continue to grow as a community with the highest birth rate per capita in North Carolina, with the fastest growing veteran population centers, shifts in military personnel, and I can go on and on with what you already know. The capital construction costs have increased since 2020 in original projections. We are blessed with a great team of consultants, engineers, owners rep, and our partnership with the Secu Foundation to help us in continuing to value-engineer this project to keep costs under control while balancing increasing needs and maintaining the original vision. As you can see by our timeline, we have moved quickly since the investment of the General Assembly and the Secu Foundation. Two years from today, we will be in a ribbon cutting with your help. Our current plan to adapt free facility is outlined on this slide. Again, we are blessed to be almost halfway to goal for total project's cost and 59% to go at just looking at projected construction cost. In order to provide the services, we prefer not to borrow funds. We need your help in a capital investment so that our services dollars that we currently spend in rent can create cash flow to ensure sustainability. When you invest in children, we know that every dollar has a return on investment of $7. We are asking for $1 million to be invested by the city. With our project schedule, ideally, this would be done over two to three years. So if I were in your shoes, I would want to know, how will One Place sustain this expansion? Through thoughtful guidance from foundation representatives, consultants, attorneys, and more, we have structured our organization to prepare for our future. We bring over $12 million of state, federal, and prior voting to Onslow County year after year. This revenue cannot be used for capital projects, and 95% is for restricted use, meaning money in for specific purposes like funding 759 preschool slots for four-year-olds, or the over 15,000 children a year we support through the Donley Parton Imagination Library. When we move into this space, we will still be the same One Place. That has been a good steward of the funds that we have managed into this community for over 25 years with an average administrative overhead of 7% or less. We continue to expand our capacity to our revenue for services because we are invested in this ever-growing community. But we need your help in a capital investment to ensure that services continue long past all of us so that our children and their children are prepared for their future. When we are all sitting in our rocking chairs, this investment we are asking you for will still be paying dividends and making our community safer and more resilient. I, along with our boards of directors, project partners, and current investors in this project, say thank you for this opportunity to share this question with you.
Got some questions? Thank you, Dawn. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Unless somebody would like to.
We're going to take a recess.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm calling in from the 2023 Reentry Conference in Charlotte, hosted by the North Carolina Department of Adult Correction. From all around the state of South Carolina, we have over 512 citizens. This includes Secretary Todd Ishi from the Department of Adult Correction. We also had the governor here earlier. We have law enforcement from around this area, city and county management, state agencies, and community organizations, all dedicated to the change of lives and services dedicated to the success of returning citizens. On the screen, you see an announcement for our upcoming simulation, reentry simulation. It's going to be held in Carteret County, and it's actually in partnership with our Carteret County Reentry Council, U.R.P.A.U., and sports, 24 sports companies. This, this flyer actually shows what we're dedicated to. It shows one side of an individual where he's incarcerated. The other side shows success. And what we're trying to do is actually empower individuals that coming out of, out of an incarcerated, which we call returning citizens. As Gordon Morton in Newport, he calls them our neighbors. Anytime you enter a room, enter a store, and you don't know everybody is in there, you do not know who is actually incarcerated. We are dedicated to the successful outcomes, and we would like to continue to show evidence-based practice, how to create success with our citizens, create success with their families, and lower recidivism to a safer community. Our upcoming reentry simulation event, we want who's going to be involved with it and actually speaking at the event. It's going to be our own Senator Lozara. She also has gotten information from Congressman Murphy's office that he's going to be there, and also Todd Ishi, who's the secretary of Department of Adult Correction. And also includes that Ernie Lee, there's going to be other commissioners from Carteret County. Some of our commissioners from Onslow said that they would be involved. I think Cindy Edwards, and also Bob Ward are at-large council persons. Next, I'm gonna bring up Michael Lorette. He is the executive director of U.R.P.A.U. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you very much, and I'm here also in Charlotte. Our experience up here, first and foremost, has been an amazing one. To be together with 500 other individuals that are here for one reason, including the governor. You know, I heard a saying today that America is the land of the second cheating, and when the gates of the prison open, the panther head, the panther head should lead to a better life. George W. Bush said that. Today, I had the opportunity to sit down with Todd Ishi. Todd is the secretary of newly-established North Carolina Department of Adult Correction. I had the opportunity to sit down with him, with the essence of that, because he had heard what we were already doing in Jacksonville specifically, and the strides that we have put, the forward motion that we are working on to make a difference. We have been recognized at this conference by multiple individuals for the things we're doing, specifically this reentry simulation. It is the first reentry simulation ever held on the east coast of the state of North Carolina. The amount of people that are going to come to this is going to be impactful. For anyone that's ever gone through a reentry simulation, it's not only powerful, it's hurtful. hurtful. I have found drone management up here, and just recently today went through a simulation trial, because they didn't realize the barriers that are placed in front of our returning home citizens. This opportunity that we have in the city of Jacksonville is unique. It's unique because we've already created a mechanism in place to assist the people. You know, some of the things, almost nine months ago, when the chief brought everybody together in the meeting, from that meeting, we have done something that the state has recognized. The state hopes that it's taking key months. In nine months' time, we have not only created capital, not only created bylaw. We have established memorandums of understanding with the Department of Public Safety, the House of Race, the City of Carteret County. We've also elected executives. We have created a beneficiary-rich- united way. We have taken people to work, and more problems, we have worked with the nonprofits to address. But we also need help for that simulation. I will tell you, first and foremost, I thank Joe Gavino, Chief Gennaro, because he assisted us not only in helping with the simulation, but also because of his leadership, and also for the very beginning of all this, for the first six months. You know, Adam Ishi's executive administrator, Mary Burrow, she made a difference in what we were doing. We now, because of the United Way, the United Way has hired someone for us on behalf of the Jacksonville Anzo Welcome Home Council, who work as our administrators. This is impactful. We're fortunate, I'd also like to take this time, I'd like to thank Capitolwoman Cindy Williams, because when we, when we were helping in these things, Cindy Edwards, I apologize. Cindy, you know, when I came to you with the process of thinking of what our logo should look like, you took my idea, created something wonderful and beautiful that you will see. You will see the tree with roots, the growth, the leaves, the new life that we have created. We are in a position now to make a difference for people coming back. At this time, what I would like to do, I would like to introduce Sharon Coe. Sharon is part of U Power You. She is the Executive Director of Strategic Planning of the Grant Writer, and her talent has already been used because she is writing grants for the Jacksonville Anzo Welcome Home Council, along with the Carteret Council. Sharon, if you don't mind, please take it from here.
Thank you very much, and I also would like to thank the Council for allowing us to speak today, and also to recognize what a wonderful job that you guys do. You have lots of hard decisions I don't think people realize as much. You have so many different groups and projects that come to you needing funding, and everyone is so worthy and doing a really good job with what they're doing to try to make an impact in the community, that it's a really difficult position that you have to put yourself in to decide, you know, who gets funding, who doesn't. The Jacksonville Anzo Welcome Home Council, I will say that I have worked in different capacities with reentry councils and understand the difficulty that it takes to establish them. I have to applaud the entire Jacksonville Anzo Welcome Home Council for their diligent efforts and the speed of which they put this council together and brought all of the stakeholders into the council and have so many different people working in different capacities. This shows a great commitment from the community as well as the city. I know Mike just mentioned you have, have support from the police department, the chief and staff there to make this happen, so we're very grateful for all of those assistance that's been given, because that's what makes this move so quickly and has progressed so wonderfully since its inception. We just want to, I guess, get started with the PowerPoint and basically say we wanted to submit for this organizational overview for the city and the people of Jacksonville to see kind of what we're doing, to bring those that are transitioning back from incarceration back into the community, and we believe that every person has the potential to create their version of success. And I'm going to about page four, if I can get the overview brought up. So what we're doing is, the vision is to assist the men and women in transition from jail and prison back into the community. And this has accomplished their peer support, linkage to health and mental health care, employment, housing, basic needs, clothing, and other community resources. And I hope, the hope is to reduce the cycle of recidivism by working with one person at a time. We work hard to see a world where every person has the opportunity to live a happy, healthy, and productive life. Some of the proposed objectives of this include the commitment to being the point of contact, or one-stop shop, if you will, for those that are incarcerated and formerly incarcerated. Currently, right now, according to the Department of Public Safety, there's about 170 people which are released back into, that are predicted to be released back into your areas, Anzo, Jacksonville, between January 1st and December 31st this year. This does not include, and I think oftentimes it's often forgotten, that every year, your local jails have hundreds and thousands of people that are released, not thousands, multiple thousands of people that are released, that this council can assist. So it's not just the ones returning from prison, but also those that you have in that cycle of recidivism locally in your jails. Providing assistance looks like removing those barriers, and as Mike mentioned, the simulation, and we would encourage everyone to both hands, basically puts you in a position to walk as a person newly released from jail or prison and understand those barriers that people are faced with, such as getting an ID, still struggling with the substance disorder, getting that treatment, transportation, housing, employment, medical treatment, education, and of course, their family reunification, and mental health and community support. We're looking to continue to convene these stakeholders to offer assistance and resources and a commitment to assist those just served and justice involved. Mike mentioned some of the accomplishments. The bylaws were written faster, I think, than maybe anyone in the state ever anticipated. Even without a physical location, the council has been connecting individuals to resources and services. Currently, right now, there are 50 people that are going to work every day. There has been 200 jobs secured and guaranteed for anyone who is in the community, whether they're on probation, they're just returning from prison, or just getting out of jail. They have a spot on the bus that they can get on and go to their employment. The Jacksonville Anzo has partnered with U Power You Foundation, as well as the Carteret County Reentry Council to create those employment opportunities. Again, 200 jobs have been secured for those. Jacksonville Anzo is, Welcome Council is working with the Jacksonville Transit Authority to secure bus taxes for those individuals who are newly released, and they are also working on an even greater project with the Carteret Correctional Center to actually secure a work release program for 40 additional men per day to work at the House of Race, ensuring that economic opportunities in the participants and filling the need of that employment in the community. We can go on to sort of the pieces coming together in our budget request.
Next slide.
Yes, I'm sorry, I think there's a delay on the internet, so I'm trying not to, to look at that. Again, you guys have, the council has done a fantastic job of securing 100 volunteers that serve on the council. 31 agencies are represented and have much support, and in three months, they have provided more than 50 individuals have been paired through the job and shop programs and transportation. The budget PowerPoint that is up there, I do realize that there was an earlier version of the actual budget included, and so there are a couple of errors on there that we can, we can talk through. Basically, what is being asked for through this, the state has talked about and encouraged the council to become active and, and brought it into being with the help of all the volunteers and everyone. However, the process with the state is sort of at a standstill because the Department of Adult Correction has now taken over the reentry services from the Department of Public Safety, so that has been a transition period for the state. No new funding will actually be provided from the state initially. There will have to be an application period. No one even knows exactly what the funding schedule is going to look like. It will not even be released until after the new fiscal year in July. So with knowing how it's a sort of a new program and some of the delays that sometimes happen at the state level and just the process of doing an application, the budget is requesting a program manager. This salary, as you can see, is very low. It is potentially going to be augmented through other sources. There will be the most important component of this, as far as the personnel cost, would include a full-time peer support person. The peer support mechanism, for those of you who might be unfamiliar with that, is going to be the glue that holds this whole program together. Being able to rely on someone for guidance and help that is a peer, someone who has those same lived-life experiences, that's an invaluable part of the program. You know, other people can talk with someone and try to help, you know, and give direction, but when they have that person that has, has basically walked the same path that they are walking now, and understand the trials and barriers that they're going to encounter, it is invaluable. So we're looking to do contracted peer support for a full-time position each year. Housing is one of the most greatest, or the greatest challenge that someone, a returning citizen, is going to face. There is a request for up to $45,000 to assist with housing costs. This would be, might be a one-time stipend of a first-month rent, a security deposit, those things that they are unable to pay just being released from jail or prison. Employment transportation costs, general transportation for the dust that would be, that is in transit right now, every day, also transporting those that are recently released. This would not include those that are in the prison, that is a separate, separate program. Emergency medicine, until when a person is released and they have these needs, that they're newly released from prison, there is a period of time that they could be without certain, say, mental health drugs or other things that would, you know, impact their health, so we would certainly want to make sure that they were able to get those on a very limited basis so they could be connected with resources, and then other potentially miscellaneous costs. The equipment and supplies would be very meager for the program, just one laptop. Again, you may be seeing an old version, I'm going to give you the correct version. A lap, you know, a laptop for a peer support specialist, email services for the board and any of the staff, website hosting, one-year cellphone service for the peer support person, the local travel of the peer support, printing and brochures and handouts. These would be to get the word out, and especially providing a method of doing recruitment to those that may be incarcerated locally inside the jails, so making sure a partnership is solidified and enhanced with the sheriff's office so that the folks in the jail get this information so they know that when they're released, they have somewhere clear to go, and of course, liability insurance. You'll notice there are not any costs for a physical location. We are trying diligently to work on getting that provided either through another nonprofit or through another means. So it is a rather lean budget when it comes to things that are not related to direct service. There was a, the grant writer contracted position there. I will let you know, I am aggressively looking for grants for this program. I have a meeting actually tomorrow with the United Way, the folks at the United Way for us to strategize and come up with additional ways. The state's money, when it comes through, is for a, it is basically a seed program, and, you know, we have to be, we have to have an aggressive method to try to not always come to a city and the county with your hands out. So we will be looking for other avenues, grant funding, it could be things like the Second Chance Act, there's a community-based reentry grant, two other grants that are available nationally, locally, and then private foundation funds that could potentially be available as well. Mike, I guess I'll turn the rest of it back over to you.
Thanks, Sharon. I'd love to announce tonight, actually, that in collaboration with the Carteret Council, we just recently received work, have we received a grant for $96,000. That grant is in the hands of Carteret County currently. We're working in conjunction with the Carteret County Community College and also NC Works. That grant is specific to, it's going to allow us, we knew from the beginning, we were going to need more than one peer support, that grant is going to give us second peer support that we're going to need. The grant is for two years, so we have coverage for a peer support for that time, and that's pretty, pretty exciting. For being only doing this for nine months, to get a grant is impressive in what we've been able to accomplish. The other thing I could be able to tell you is that we do have a house, which Jacksonville Anzo Welcome Home Council is, we have, working with our examples, Henderson Air and the Shopping Center, Pastor Ricky is putting an office in for us right there. We're working directly with DPF where an individual that comes back from the prison environment, they have 72 hours to report to the probation officer. Then they have 72 hours that they're coming back to Jacksonville to report that the council did, because one thing they don't need is work. One thing we ask for them is we have 200 jobs. They all have a job in the next year. One thing is that it's important for you to recognize, even though we're looking for a sum of money of $156,000, with 50 individuals going to work at the House of Race at their current rate of cost, that's a give-back of $1.7 million. In other words, the average pay is $34,000 a year. Of those 50 individuals that are working, every one of them lives within city limits of Jacksonville. That means that's $1.7 million of the economic growth within the city, because now we have those individuals paying rent, mortgages, buying their groceries. So it's not just about what the money helps us to do, about what we're doing with them. All right? With the additional jobs that we have, double that number within a year, with 200 people going to work, and that's because of the commitment that we have from the Department of Public Safety right there on our program. So if you have any questions, if you weren't happy to answer, we'll send them for you.
Don't you have any questions?
Okay, we'll, we'll get ready to close out. I would also, again, like Big Chief, Big Chief Leganero, who actually brought this to me several years back about restarting another reentry council. Also, a young man by the name of J.B. Crowe stopped me in front of the city council for my second meeting, I think, and said, what am I going to do about reentry? So we are working to try to make a successful reentry program, and I thank you all for helping us out. I also thank you, thank all the community partners for assisting in this process and our continued growth. Also, any organization that would like to get in contact with us to be involved, and we also, we're always looking for others to get involved based on what their ministries are or what the organization is already doing. We're not trying to reinvent any wills here, we're just trying to make sure the keys roll. Anyway, good night, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to put it on the record, the logo services were a donation from the privately to the organization, they're not a client from the company, so no dollars exchanged there. Just like.
Thank you for the program. I think it's great idea. What do you do for the program? You got to get them.
Please, the public safety.
That's how you want to look at it. This is so good.
Oh, you're taking this one back.
No, man, you get to keep both of them.
I like the one.
It's Christmas. Another doorstopper.
Mayor's got one.
There you go.
Thank you very much, sir.
I'll miss it.
That would have been the best.
Well, I'm playing basketball.
He really is more blessed.
You had another person to give that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, have you?
Give them all the way.
I have one.
Save some money, there's some traffic coming right there.
They're next, huh?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I know you've had a long evening, so I'll try to, I'll try to be greedy, right?
Ooh, yeah. I'm trying not to leave you this on.
But, you know, the manager just passed out the draft capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-four to thirty-three. So tonight, what I'll do is kind of hit the highlights. I know you just gotten it, I think it was uploaded last week digitally as well, so whichever you prefer. If you have any questions, please send them back to the manager, we'll be happy to answer any questions or supply additional information. So tonight, what I'll do is give you a brief overview, talk about the projects that we're wrapping up. The, I'll focus on the F Y twenty-four projects and then we'll kind of give you a summary for each of the departments. Just as a reminder, I know that we do this every year, but the capital improvement plan is a ten-year planning horizon. It covers all of the capital projects that we plan for in the city. We update it and review it annually. We plan and prioritize projects and program those projects in the appropriate year. And then we use this document, especially on the water and sewer side, for evaluating our water and sewer rates as part of our rate model, which Sabrina is going to talk to you about tonight. And then we use it to calculate our system development fees, which has to be done every five years. And the general statute requires a ten-year planning window. So, and lastly, while it's a ten-year plan, only the first year is funded and typically you adopt that as part of your budget. To be a capital improvement plan project, it has to be basically a construction-type project. We don't, we don't add equipment or computers or, you know, backhoes or trucks or fire trucks or ladder trucks or anything like that into the capital improvement plan. This really is project-driven. The project typically takes twelve months to design and construct or longer. It has a useful life of five years and typically exceeds fifty thousand dollars. There may be one or two exemptions in there, for example, Sturgeon City Boardwalk. If you look at the whole program, it's a replacement program, so we add a little bit of money each year. So that year may not be fifty thousand dollars, but if you total the whole project, it exceeds the fifty thousand dollars. And then the typical types of projects are either rehabilitation, new construction, growth-related, replacement, or just general improvement projects. So with your capital improvement plan, the ten-year window has a hundred and twenty-eight projects totaling approximately a hundred and seventy-one million dollars. Each of those projects are tied back to your council-adopted goals, and the ones that are kind of addressed by your capital improvement program are circled there around the slide. It has various funding sources. As you can imagine, it's not funded by just the general fund or just water and sewer. So we have various funding sources, including donations or, or donations, I guess is the wrong word, but contributions from my council county. We have grant funding. We have, as you can see, the revenue bonds and the water and sewer are all water and sewer-related projects. So that is more, that's about fifty-three percent of your total funding for the ten-year plan. So more than half of this is your water and sewer side of the plan. And then you also have some general fund and your installment purchase, which is funded by general fund, and your capital reserve. And from capital reserve, it's typically about one point, or it's around one point eight million dollars this year. And the power bill, which is where we do our street and sidewalks, is about one point seven. Half of, just over half of that goes into the capital plan each year for funding. The rest of that goes into the street's maintenance budget, but anything not used in the street's maintenance budget then rolls back into the capital improvement plan the next year. So with that, we have several projects that will be completed in F Y twenty-three or the beginning part of F Y twenty-four. I won't go through each of those individually. The one on this slide I'd really like to talk about a little bit is the Brookview Infrastructure. As you'll recall, we had a major sewer main failure there. We had to replace the sewer main, which precipitated replacing the water main. We have that done. We've repaved the patch, which is what was disturbed. That street will be milled and overlaid this summer with the street paving project. So kind of wanted to highlight, while the infrastructure piece of that project is done, we will come back and get this street this summer with our next street paving. And then, one last one on that one, the F Y twenty-one water line replacement. We actually just installed a new water line up Richard's Drive to provide better fire support for Ozote County or so, I don't know, to the community ministries and a little church that's right there on Richard's Drive. So that project's wrapped up and we'll hopefully have that line in service very soon. And then, of course, the biggest one on this one is obviously Jack Amyet. So we have that project pretty much wrapped up in operation and we'll be closing out there and entering our warranty period. So for F Y twenty-four, you'll notice that we have forty-one total projects across all of the departments for the entire plan. Already mentioned, we have a hundred and twenty-eight. Of the forty-one, twenty-nine already have funding, so they're rolling over from prior years. A great example would be the Parkwood Regional Sewer System that we've been talking about for probably the last ten. That project's actually out to bid and we expect to get bids back in May.
May, May third.
May third. So with that, really only twelve projects are new to F Y twenty-four or new for funding F Y twenty-four. And there you can see the breakout of the projects by department. You'll notice that the Public Services Department has the lion's share of those projects. The reason is, a large portion of those are water and sewer, which was indicated by the funding sources, and then we're kind of the catch-all for everything else. So that would be streets and sidewalks and stormwater. But then if there's anything general like parking lot repaving or upgrades to existing facilities that are specific to, you know, a fire station or something like that, those would all fall into public service. For public safety, they have one project in F Y twenty-four, that is Fire Station Four. You all know that's previously funded because you were all pretty much at the groundbreaking ceremony. That project's moving along nicely and I think we'll have a very nice fire station. And you can see that what we've tried to do is tie the goals that that, that the projects touch back in on each slide. So you'll notice that that one not only touches quality of life for our citizens because of response times and those kind of things, but also for our workforce and for our public safety people. In Recreation Parks, we have seven projects proposed for F Y twenty-four. The one on this slide that doesn't have prior year funding is Curst Street Fishing Pier. That pier's been there for a while and we need to do some work to it, so this will be an investment in that pier and replacing some of the boards and some boards along with that pier. On this slide, I think you're familiar with the Miracle Meadow, I mean Miracle Field project. We received grant funding, so if you approve the capital plan as proposed with this project, then funding would become available July first and we can move forward with the grant that we received.
Boy, while you're on Recreation, why are we still showing five hundred seven thousand for Jack Amyet prepares for this year's budget, coming budget?
I'll have to check. And maybe that we just hadn't expended all the funds yet, so let me, I'll have Randall look that up while we're talking.
I was just looking at it in terms of the regular budget, general fund, page twelve, show respond. Five billion two hundred ninety.
Can you give me the number to get that?
Page twelve.
Okay. I'll have Randall look that up while we're.
Okay.
And then also on this side is the crossings at the park behind Williamsburg Plantation. You'll notice in the capital improvement plan, there is not a project for the overall facility itself. And the reason for that is Anthony has led us through the selection process for a design team. And once we have that master plan completed, then we'll appropriately program that project in.
Mr. Hanson, remind us again where Miracle Field is located.
The Miracle Field, they're looking at the Old Skate Park in the Commons is that For Transportation Services, we have ten projects. On those projects, they're primarily, we do have one trail project, the Downtown Trail Project, it's fully designed and I believe it's actually been awarded. I don't see Anthony, but so that project should be moving forward. And then we have several intersection and signal improvements, and then we have a couple of projects like the ADA projects and the fiber project. There are ongoing programs that reoccur each year or every few years. So while those bottom ones have, those bottom few projects have new funding, they are reoccurring programs that the city typically invests in each year. And then for Public Services, we have a total of twenty-three projects through this year. You'll notice between water projects, sewer projects, and combined infrastructure, which is really water and sewer and typically street, the bulk of those projects are more than half of the total projects from Public Services. So moving into those, you'll see that new bridge infrastructure will carry on because that is an eighteen-month project. I already talked about the Parkwood Regional or Western Regional Sewer System. That project will be, we'll receive bids on May third for that. And then we have several other projects out there that are really rolling over, they're prior funded, either design is completed or in process now, so that we can move forward with construction. Really, the only project that I can think of that is a new project, really is not a new project, it's the Drummer Callum, I didn't make this list, I apologize, this is the one that I realized I left off, but it's the Drummer Callum Water and Sewer Extension. There was a piece of property that was bought across from Stevenson Toyota on Seventeen by Mr. Brown. And we agreed that if he would annex that property, we would extend water and sewer from the southern side of Seventeen where Toyota is over to his property and then he would be responsible for extending it out into his property. But the city would recover our cost through our system development fees. So we would do it through our water and sewer service area. So that project is in your book this year and is proposed for this year. Time Water Associates contacted us saying that they were interested in moving forward. The design is completed, completed, we completed that design and actually had it permitted when the property was annexed back in two thousand sixteen or seventeen. But with most projects like this, we don't typically move forward until the developer begins to move forward. So that project's ready to go, we just need funding. And then the other projects that are new funding this year are our ongoing projects, like our street paving and then our pedestrian and ADA improvements. So in summary, again, only the F Y twenty-four projects are funded. The twenty-five, F one twenty-five through thirty-three projects are there for planning and programming, but they are not funding, funded as part of the budget. Again, we try to tie each of the projects that we propose to your council goals and initiatives. And at least for the water and sewer projects, they are all covered in the water and sewer model that Sabrina is going to speak with you about. And did you look up Jack Amyet?
No, I didn't care.
It, it, yeah, we should be closing it out this year. That's probably what it says, that we'll be closing it out, sir.
Yeah, that's just the project to date budget. There's no other funding this year.
We have what left on it?
There is.
No, we don't, do not have hardly anything left in that account. It's there without. You were on page twelve? On the.
Yep, I was. She was in there. Twenty grand. Page twelve nineteen. Capital projects, summary, page twelve.
I think it's just because that's an open project and we'll end up closing out and I'm assuming that that's.
What's the budget today, Collins?
Yeah, budget today's at five point three nine million.
Yeah.
And that's just, that's the total, because it's wrapped up this year in the F Y. Yeah, there's hardly anything left in that. I think maybe for random finish, there might have been fifteen, twenty thousand.
There is not a lot whatsoever. We just had to be.
Why are you still having a fiscal year ninety? I don't have it on this page, Mr. Ray. I'm just, I may be looking on the wrong page, so I'll have to look at it.
The center column is additional funding. The column to the right is just a project to date budget, which would be the total until it's closed. It's not being, it's not being added to twenty-four again, it's just, that's the budget total sitting there until it's.
Okay.
Right, yeah, they just show up and until we close them out, they stay on the projects.
I see, okay.
So that's my thirty thousand view, above view of the capital improvement program. If you have any questions, please send them to Mr. Ray, we will try to get those answered for you. And with that, I'll turn the over to Sabrina to talk about the financing issues.
That was the fastest key present I can, I don't know.
I was trying to keep it short.
So as long as there, we usually do present the water story model with the C I P because half of the funding in the C I P is related to the water sewer and we want to be sure that we have sufficient rates for that. So our rate model is a financial planning tool that we use to determine if our rates are sufficient to cover any C I P projects, do we have the next waters. It also helps us monitor our balance to make sure that we're keeping the fund balance at the level that we set when we first had the model created. And it also ensures that we're getting debt compensation that we have to have for our revenue. While we're putting together the model, we do make some assumptions. We have our F one twenty-three expenditures that we have scheduled for that we're watching at Seventeen going on. And then the literal water F one twenty-three expenditures that we have as of right now. At four seventeen point, we estimate expense expiation between one and a half percent or four percent. The amount of collateral, everything from salaries to utilities to construction, the CIP projects, the account, there's an inflation link as well. And issue, you want to achieve a personal account, you need to argue that it's a downtown scale because we want to be sure we won't affect the economy for the rest of time, so we can fight the bill. We are still, at the last, we have our values, which are taken at some rate. For that, that's on all theaters, watches for usage as these people still can do it, these are all. We have all the deep Chris County partners, we like to make new requests on the which are very similar called three. And it's the help to pay nine whole dollars, you can say, well, you know, it's a long range for that. And so just now, it's a, it's a twenty-three, thirty-five, seventy-four, fifty-four. From the, I guess, we break out to, so our usage is really about the same and our governance reports, I want to continue. And that's just, we're going to be another new theater. And we're talking about meetings here, we don't necessarily have stairs from the neighbors. We have good hand presidential theaters, we have all the research here. They don't turn yet, up next year, times they're bringing this in. Only for sewer. And that's all the research that's about here today. And so, our use form is pretty close as well, so we're going to be watching these today. And for your question, I don't. If, um, the, the frame go over there, you can see there's a water and sewer Except for the top of the guy where they're not supposed to find all three. And then having all the other, so we're all far safe now. Um, because that's what we're working on, and then, um, the, 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 the two thousand, yes, two thousand. But mine is a what we call interest intent rate system. So you were to margin in rate, these all interest on the same capital rates. That's the rate that we need to extend to five factors to part of the, that's not love that you're able to make our debts or situations. Um, if you're called in the past, we have childhood, we did years of high rate increase and then all of a sudden we had a little increase after we had to activate those point three increases. So my idea now is to, um, maybe to have a full schedule each year. And we'll keep wrestling with maybe as much as a person, um, third, two, three, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Or if you can talk to the adults and bring them to the table for a day or two. And if, as the actual, the real opportunity gets to those wild years, if meant to, if what's, uh, this is a rate, you will have one or six dollars for the answer to allow if you, um, are going to do like this system. You know, the just a time rate, because why you end up on the, on quarter twenty thousand, it's all good. Any questions? I want to start with one thing that the rate model, um, for the angles of the right now, just to keep, I want to make sure they stay around the target. So you can say, great. And if I send home, this is where the, um, spin out, one balance, which is as second point three percent. So it's all. That is, um, it's hard to make staff, this sort of task, how if you don't have sufficient for our candidates. Um, there's only four, they had a reservation, right? And this happens at the top, so it's generally a lot. Like, I'm continuing. Which looks great because it's on the budget. Thank you.
One of the good things of sitting down with Sabrina and Wally is watching them go through this model and to be able to update it. The point that Sabrina's making there too is getting the full rate structure in over the ten-year period allows us not to have that big wow factor. You know, a lot of times we pull up that minimum bill, so if you're talking to citizens, we want to be able to show what the difference is with the average water and sewer bill, which maybe my household that has four or five, or who knows how many people in it. And then the minimum bill, which could be a one, two, maybe even a three-person home. So when you're looking at those numbers, we, we always want to compare, which is great if they added this in this model, the minimum bill versus the average bill. Because we constantly look at how do we impact the lower user of water and wastewater. And that number is not in FY twenty-three-two, it's not one oh seven sixty-three, that number's sixty-six eighty-five. So as you're thinking about that over time, just want to remember to shape that narrative for our different types of households. So everyone understands the different impacts of what that two point two five means exponentially, year after year. For, for most of you, you've seen this year after year. For a couple of us, we've just now seen this model. And I just, I say that Wally and Sabrina do an excellent job of managing the projections to satisfy the goal of not having the one big wham impact. Because you could have that fluctuation of no increase, no increase, one point nine percent increase, but then on the back end, you're going to catch seventeen point six one percent. And we all know there's not a year where we ever think seventeen point six one percent is doable. And, and easiest way to think about that is your gas price. We always say, if we could just manage our gasoline prices over time, it'd be easier for us to handle it instead of ebb and flow. And this model allows us to, uh, to utilize that over time. And you'll see on the fund balance for water and wastewater that it looks great. But as soon as we knock out the one large project and then consistently hit every one of those, they don't have small projects, water and wastewater, small projects, five million typically in water and wastewater. And so you see that down and for us to maintain that point, it's, it's, takes effort. And it takes knowledge of understanding the full capital improvement plan to be able to maintain the model over time. And I think that's the value when we talk to different groups of citizens, being able to explain that to them so they can see that explanation is, is a value. I, I, I wouldn't think citizens would ever come in to see the rate model, but you can, that would be crazy. But you could carry that message of what we're trying to do over the ten-year period pretty effectively to them, just with the slides that Sabrina's given us.
Just to make a comment on fund balance, we end up, you know, when we do borrow, you know, it's more than like we repay ourselves. So when we award the contract, what we're doing is temporarily using fund balance to be able to award the contract. You know, and so what we're doing is self-financing for a period of time. So if you don't have that fund balance, you can't award the contract. You know, so, you know, I mean, there's a need for some of this fund balance when people really, you know, look at, why are you doing that? Well, that's part of how we manage our business operations.
Thanks, Mayor.
One last thing on the budget, uh, four second council initiative. Have you got anything in our budget workout to give us an update for that on that?
Oh, what?
Well, like, what, what's committed and what's available each year and when those commitments run out.
Could we get that, you know, just, you know, it may reflect the sense, put that right in the budget along with the, uh, the fund balance, kind of signed fund balance, so just, you know, just as a general information to.
I do want to say in comment, I think tonight, Wally and Sabrina's presentation is phenomenal. And I think that the presentations we've had from the community are exciting. Mr. Ord and I were talking in the break here that it's exciting to see community partners making things happen. It's like Mr. Sosa said, these projects are going to move forward one way or the other. You know, whether the city's a partner or not, the community is going to figure out how to make things happen. And it's, it's great to be a partner at the table to provide whatever level of support we can. A lot of these things, it may be staff support that we can provide, it may be council support. But to hear the energy based on the total number of projects that we have in the CIP, that the community's pushing out, seeing new businesses open, seeing houses being built, it shows some vibrancy and it's, it's very exciting. And then the other comment I will make is, uh, Mayor, you may have noticed that Rose is not here this evening. You may not have noticed that either, but I know, it seems seamless, but I do want to say, uh, Rose is recovering well and we, we miss her and we, um, we keep her in our thoughts and our prayers. But Alexis, we have run her through the wringer this week to get an agenda together and thrown stuff in last day and the day before and on Sunday. And it's been great, so it's a great start to our one city moment here. Did you want to present this?
No.
I was just checking. I didn't want to miss out the opportunity. So the, the Girl Scouts troop got to come this week. It's actually Pine Girls Scout Troop four oh nine. They did something that's really fun is they came into the council chambers and they sat in your seats. And in your seats, uh, you, most of your seats are fun and all, but the mayor's has a gavel. And so they got to cycle through with a gavel. And part of that process was they banged the gavel and made some quotes, a few of their quotes. These are incredible. First one was, I'm guilty. I'm not going to tell you which kid that was. My kids are not up there, thank heavens. The, the second was, my sister cannot have any more cookies. Thought that was pretty good. My third was, my mom's going to give me another sister. So I don't know what kind of gavel you have, Mayor, but if it's that powerful, please get rid of it. One, their family's going to move to Florida, so we're going to miss that kid when they gavelled it. And then the last one, really powerful, keep the gavel away from our house. We're going to get a new puppy. So you, you look through this and I don't know how you can tell those faces no whatsoever. Then they got.
This was a Brownie troop?
This was, yes, sir. Coastal Pines Girl Scout Troop four oh nine. Then they got to go in to see Alan and, and I don't think Josh did anything, but he was sitting there with Alan while they're all pointing to the screen. But they got to tour there and they got to see how the control room works and they moved the cameras, which.
They're in hall, whatever it is they're watching, so it must not be a replay of a council.
Must have been the mayor up there with the, with the camera. It was a budget meeting.
That's right. They did a great job. Two of the, uh, two of the girls, they completed projects and they were able to earn their democracy badge. So that's the whole part of these programs is that you're doing service projects so that you get additional badges to rock with these awesome outfits that they're wearing. And thank you to everybody that participated in, in that evening, which was, um, which was awesome. This is, again, it's just great pictures. It makes you worry about the other pictures we're going to share because it's hard to beat this. But we did have our extravaganza egg hunt that happened at the Commons and just a ton of kids out and about. And the Easter Bunny showed up to make an appearance. This is the fun stuff that we do all the time. We utilize multiple field spaces for these hunts. Again, we, we have kids in different areas so that we focus energies and efforts so that the older kids, as we heard earlier, do not steal from the younger kids or take out the Easter Bunny. But this is the effectiveness of what we do at the city with, with these programs. Super exciting and a great job by Susan's team and everybody that was, that was working here like that. This is an awesome story. Most of you already know that Christina Cook is a local and an amazing astronaut. So already in the record books, you may have seen her come up on the news this last week. I'm probably the least educated out of the group here, but I do know she's a White Oak High School alum. And in the Children's Museum downtown, they have a, a nice little display about her. Not only is she the world record holder for the longest space flight by a woman, she's getting ready to sit on Artemis II mission to be the first woman to fly around the moon, which is incredible.
Where'd she go to college?
Uh, she went to. She skipped college, she's so smart. She sailed through. I think she attended the Great University in Raleigh, North Carolina. I believe she's an NC State graduate. And we are proud as can be to have her represented on our team, not because of what she's going to do, but because of what she's already done and the possibilities that she opens up for people that, I, I think I read she attended Space Camp five years in a row and now she's flying around the moon.
It shows that a college education doesn't necessarily hold you back.
It doesn't matter, does it? You can do things to overcome your educational levels.
She didn't go to Duke. You misunderstood.
Three hundred and twenty-eight days in space already and she's part of this next program that she's scheduled to go out again and potentially could have additional. You know, I can't wait till after this that when she comes back home, if we can appreciate that as well.
Remember, remember, Nick Lanier was her mentor.
I guess her parents still live here, Dr. Hammer.
Her father lives here, her mother resides.
Okay.
Well, very exciting. And I, we'd be remiss if we did not add this to the, to the mix today.
Well, Wally kind of stepped up the first time when she did her, did her time in space and claimed her as their child, you know, of course. You know, she was, because she was going to NC State, she's going to NC State, so they stepped up first and grabbed the spotlight on the Jacksonville.
We'll reclaim that, Mayor. There's nothing that Raleigh can do that we can't do better. We'll, we'll get Lisa rolling and we'll get some press out. Uh, this is real cool. So this is the Joint Committee Community Cleanup. And so we had the Jacksonville Youth Council, we had the Environmental Appearance Council, um, and we had multiple team members here, as you can see pictured. Which is great because we're getting out, and this is the area in and around, uh, behind altitude. So this was a cleanup today, which is impressive because you may recognize some of these faces here today that have.
Please don't.
That have, you may not recognize some, they might be a little incognito, but they made it out today to make things happen and to clean up an area and to have multiple entities. The, the fact is, it's not just one group doing the work. It's, it's called joint committee for a reason because we have multiple people out and about, um, in the, in the activity today. One of the more impressive things today is one of our volunteers fell down, had an accident. And our resident nurse on call, Dr. Washington, responded to this event. And, and this is something crazy. You can't pick these things because a lot of times we have accidents. You don't have someone that's trained to respond right there next to them. We were caught, we rely on our public safety services to respond. But word on the street is, Dr. Washington was there and was able to effectively manage, uh, this injury and to assist in the process to calm down one of our volunteers and to assist them to get, uh, the response that they needed. And I think that's, that's beyond impressive. I was telling Dr. Washington, not only should do that and clean up, she then came to the meeting and doesn't look like she was out in the cleanup today. I think there's a value there and that's going above and beyond. So, Mayor, when we talk about the one city moment, there's so multiple things going on here today that were impressive. But with, uh, with our team here, multiple members of our team and then Dr. Washington taking it to another level, we see something that, uh, that could have been a, a much worse situation that was handled effectively. That's a value add, I think. Mayor, I was somewhere here, I don't know if I didn't make it in the picture, but I think I was somewhere there cleaning up as well. Maybe behind that, I gotta be in, I gotta be in one of these pictures. Hold on a second, I gotta be in, oh, man, they must not have gotten me. Josh typically misses out. Yeah, I think I was in that car.
But you should have said you were behind the camera.
That's right. I was way behind. We had enough representation there today from, from these guys that we did an awesome job and I think that's part of it. It ties in perfectly with the presentations you heard tonight, Mayor. And this is, these things are all awesome, uh, one city moments that give us a lot of pride.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything before we get to trial?
Okay. I think that's my second stepping in council, R and W, so I'm, yeah. I need pay raise.
We don't have the money here, we don't have.
Had a close by, Dr. Washington, he faced that same.
That unrestricted balance.
So we need to, as a marching to the jury.
So move.